All members of the League of Lennox Township Park Presidents, this is December 4th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval meeting agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Support?
I have motioned by trustee Gurley, supported by clerk Dan, now by the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, carried on, motion passes. Approval minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:06:23 and special meeting of 11:14:23.
Second.
I have motioned by treasurer Holland, supported by trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried on, the motion passes. Public announcements. Public talk. Consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by township board and will be acted by one motion. According to established township rules, certainly no separate discussion of these items, plus a member of the board or republics or requires an or prior committee in which event the chair may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration of their agenda with item number eight below. Through this consent agenda shall be joined and will call all of those present and going.
I have on the orders and bills list during the month we paid $122,801.95, currently to be paid $689,961.35, requesting approval for a total of $812,763.30.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders and bills in the amount of $812,763.30.
Second.
I have motioned by treasurer Holland, second by trustee Clifford, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, new business, item A sewer service deferment request, 19-06-14-400-024, pure trucking, Mr. John.
Ah yes, good evening. Public Parks Department has received a request from a developer of pure trucking for the, to defer the installation of a sanitary line that's required by ordinance along the 29-mile road frontage. This frontage is their secondary frontage, does not facilitate the tap that they would need, that would come in off aggression. But they are asking if they can defer the installation of this roughly 2,000-feet pipe at this time. Attached with their letter of request, you also have gotten notes from Mr. Safe and myself going over this request and what our recommendation is. If should you move forward with this, we just ask that we have some kind of agreement and triggers for the later installation of this service pipe. We do, we do have two representatives from the developer in the audience. If you have any direct questions as far as what the development is, what their plans are and so forth.
I will make a motion that we grant the sewer service deferment request for property 1906144024, pure trucking, with the agreement that at any time the 29-mile road becomes developed and the sewer needs to go through, that they have to hook up at that time.
They would need to install that line.
That is correct, yes.
I will second that.
I have motioned by clerk Dan, second by treasurer Holland, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, item B Johnson Controls Contract Renewal Proposal, Mr. John.
Yes. This proposal in front of you is to extend a current agreement that we've had in place with Johnson Controls. We currently have two, one for the mechanical side, another one for the computer control side. This is for the control side. We've had this in effect for some years now. They do do two scheduled visits a year where they kind of clean things up and basically help us from having troubles in the future with some of the system controls. Everything, the entire building is ran off of a program. We have 12 different units down there that they talk and it tells us what to do. And over a course of time, it gets cluttered, just like your desktop computer. So this is the maintenance program where they come in, they watch it. If we do need service, if we do get at a reduced rate, and we do get preferential scheduling when we do need service. So the updated agreement, this is a three-year contract. First year will be $34.95, second year slight increase to $36.90, and then another slight increase for the third year of $38.90. This has worked out very well in the past. It has put off some other problems that were occurring and cleaned up the system real well. So I would recommend that we continue to service it this time.
I would like to make a motion that we enter into the Johnson Controls Contract Renewal for a period of three years as it has been presented.
I'll second.
I have motioned by clerk Dan, second by treasurer Holland, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Item C Community fire suppression suppression policy proposal, Mr. Green.
Good evening, board. This evening we come forward with a request. This is kind of last minute, we found out last week through a little bit of a walkthrough, that the fire suppression systems in the building have pretty much failed completely. They have been inactive for a number of years. They no longer meet the codes that are required. We have expedited some quotes that came back. We asked the members to get these back to us ASAP. We have requests for complete renovation of that system. Just a couple of highlights on that system, the backflow preventers are not accurate from my understanding. The system will not drain, it is locked up in the way it's positioned from over the years of changing and doing a number of things. With that being said, we had asked our fire inspector to come through, take a look at it. He made some recommendations. We went ahead and took a bunch of those items, other required items, and put it out and said this is what we need. Went out to a few different companies that were recommended in the business. As you'll see in your packet that was added on, item C, there was a few bids brought back. One of them was completely off the wall, unacceptable, as you'll see in the documentation. They didn't even come up with a good number to start with. One of them we got back was just the alarm system. Another one started out at the base bid of $22,000 without the items that needed to be added on. We have the alarm monitoring system is also part of this, so what you'll see at the end of this is a bid from systematic fire protection. Now this bid happens to be an all-inclusive bid with the total of $40,931 to repair the system that we have, bring it back to code, put in the new backflow preventers, put in the sprinkler heads, put in the drainage system, also moving the fire permit coupler if it needs to be, there's an additional requirement on that in their bid proposal. There's also two different alarm system monitoring options. One of them is a base system, which we will go back to our fire inspector, Tim Savvy, to asking which one of the two. What we're bringing forward this evening to you is the one with the most active and desired functions that incorporates the entire building, the interior, exterior, and the alarm systems with notifications. When you look at the total numbers put together with all the documents, you're going to see a total bid for $59,106.8. This is from systematic fire protection. Now we looked at systematic fire protection and found out that they are in fact the same company that did this building when it was built. Looking at the history of this building, there has been no issues, no concerns, and it seems to pass the fire inspection requirements each year. So at this point in time, we would like to request the board to consider approving this. As if we do not approve and move forward with some type of immediate repairs, that building will be backlog and stopped for any and all operations. And we are currently right on target with the schedule. But regretfully, the fire service system was never part of that building renovation project or consideration whatsoever. No one ever thought that that building was not going to pass when basically the system's failing.
Architect recognized that going through those, I mean.
Architect would have never looked at that when he drew it.
It's all part of the thing depending on what you had in the drawing. Another thing I got a question of, did you, we need to look at what, there's going to be additional electrical here for that. Most systematics got that included. I mean, the fire protection system can be wired up by a systematic, but any electrical circuits that feed that would go on the electrical bit. And so I don't know, who did they work that to?
So the general contractor has the electrician in there now. And for us to add circuits currently to that would not be a problem whatsoever because they have a base bid of all the wiring required. And if we add the circuitry for the alarm systems, that won't be an issue because right now that building is bare walls that we've stripped in and started putting in all the walls all of a sudden. The PEX lines are in, that's not.
Would that not be on the print?
I'm sorry.
There's not going to be a problem if that system not being on the print to be wired.
They, systematic does all the print work required and the electrician, and the electrician can add that in immediately if approved by the architect. That, that won't be an issue at this point in time.
Well, let me know if he says it wasn't on the print, but anyway, that's all I have.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid to systematic fire protection in the amount of $59,106.68 for the renovation of the substation and community building.
I'll second.
Just one caveat, Madam Clerk, that was the maximum if required.
Okay. Up to $59,106.68.
Thank you.
I have motioned by clerk Kandell, supported by treasurer Holland, and the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item D Planning Commission Appointment, Mr. Green.
Good evening, board. This evening, the supervisor's office is coming forward requesting the hereby, excuse me, the following nominations for the individuals for reappointment to the planning commission. We're requesting that Karen Turchi be reappointed with the term expiring 12/31/2026. In addition to that, we're also asking that Tanya Myler be reappointed with the term expiring 12/31/2026. That I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Karen Turchi to the planning commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Support?
I have motioned by treasurer Holland, supported by clerk Kandell, and the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Holland?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Tanya Myler to the planning commission with the term expiring on 12/31/2026.
Second.
I have motioned by clerk Kandell, supported by trustee Gurley, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye. Aye.
All right, item E Zoning Board of Appeals Appointment, Mr. Green.
Good evening, board. This evening, the supervisor's office is requesting a nomination following individual for reappointment to the Lennox Township Zoning Board of Appeals. This evening, we're requesting that Chuck Geisler be reappointed with the term expiring 12/31/2023.
26.
26, excuse me. Type out. That I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion, we reappoint Chuck Geisler to the CBA, or Zoning Board of Appeals, with the term expiring on 12/31/2026.
Second.
I have motioned by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
All right. Item F Recreation Committee Appointment, Mr. Green.
Good evening, board. With that, the supervisor's office is hereby nominating the following individuals for reappointment to the Lennox Township Parks and Recreation Committee. First off, this evening, we're requesting that Christina Turchi be reappointed with the term expiring 12/31/2026. And we're also asking that Maria Swatowski, with the term expiring 12/31/2026, also be reappointed.
I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Christina Turchi to the Lennox Township Parks and Recreation Committee with the term expiring 12/31/2026.
Second.
I have motioned by clerk Kandell, second by treasurer Holland, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Maria Swatowski with the term expiring on 12/31/2026 to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second.
I have motioned by trustee Gurley, second by trustee Clifford, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
All right. Item G Policy Manual Review, Madam Clerk.
In the coming months, it's the intention of the clerk's office to review all of our current policies and procedures to update them. As many remain the same as they were in 2015. To that end, the clerk's office will be providing each board member with a copy of several current policies to be reviewed each month. We're asking that each member of the board take this information, review it, and make any proposed changes to the copy in your possession. All proposed changes should be returned to the clerk's office. The clerk's office then will prepare any policies that require changes. If there are conflicting notes on the policy, it will be brought back to the board. Once all policies have been reviewed and changes voted on and documented, the entire package will be forwarded to the township attorney to be reviewed before the final vote to accept the new policies. So you will see you have attached to the back, I think, the first five or six policies. So the intent is that you take them and look at them and make any changes, then return it to the clerk's office where they will be changed as needed and held on to until they're approved by the attorney's office.
I will make a motion to approve the review of Lennox Township policies and procedures as recommended by clerk Kandell.
Second.
I have motioned by treasurer Holland, second by trustee Clifford, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
All right. Item H Vacancy Policy Proposal, Mr. Green.
Good evening, board. This evening, it's been brought to the attention that no policy is currently in place in case of any vacancy in the office of the supervisor, clerk, or treasurer, except for what that is by statutory. To ensure that in case Lennox Township retains the continuity of government, we are putting forth the following policy for consideration to the board. As you'll see attached, the vacancy in the office of the supervisor, clerk, or treasurer. In the event of a vacancy in the position of a township supervisor statutorily, the deputy supervisor shall assume the duties of the township supervisor, but shall not assume the supervisor's position and duties of the board of trustees until a vacancy is filled. In the event of a vacancy in the position of the township clerk, the deputy clerk shall transfer over the position of administrative deputy clerk and shall assume all duties of the clerk's office, but shall not assume the clerk's position and duties of the board of trustees until the vacancy is filled. In the event of a vacancy in the position of the township treasurer, the deputy treasurer shall transfer over the position of administrative deputy treasurer and shall assume all duties of the treasurer's office, but shall not assume the treasurer's position and duties of the board of trustees until that vacancy is filled. That I'll bring it back to the board for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the vacancy policy proposal as recommended by the supervisor's office.
Support?
I have motioned by treasurer Holland, supported by clerk Kandell, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Holland?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item I Credit Card Policy Proposal, Mr. Green.
Wait a minute, you better back up. That's, she said supervisor's office, that indicates we needed to vote on the other two, right?
No, that's recommended by the supervisor's office, that was your motion.
For all of them?
It's one policy.
Okay, I just thought you were going to vote a separate, okay, that's fine. I vote to stay the same. All right, with that, this evening, members of the board, given a review of the policies currently, the supervisor's office would like to present the use of the credit cards and ever-increasing reluctance of companies and those doing business with the township to accept written checks, and the supervisor's office is hereby proposing the following policy regarding credit cards. With that, you'll see it attached. I don't want to be glaber and go through each line item. Put the amendment to that that you will have on your documents. I direct you to the last page, the last paragraph. Following positions of the township credit card are subject to this policy. The cards that would be issued would be to the township clerk, the township treasurer, the township supervisor, and township trustees. Credit cards issued to the township trustees shall be for the sole purpose of payment for travel, meals, accommodations while on township businesses, excluding expenses incurred. Unless being utilized for the aforementioned reason, the credit cards issued by the township trustees will remain in secure storage controlled by the treasurer or the clerk of township hall in custody of the clerk, excuse me. Any other positions or departments of the board of trustees shall meet during deemed appropriate by them. If there's any questions for the prior policy or... Please take a quick review of that, I'm sorry. Because that's still the same as it was before, it's just amended at the bottom.
I will make a motion to approve the credit card policy as recommended by the supervisor's office.
I'll support that. I have motioned by treasurer Holland, supported by the chair, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Holland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
All right, item J AT&amp;T Internet and Wireless Contract Renewal, Madam Clerk.
Um, as most of you know, we currently use AT&amp;T for our Wi-Fi and other services. They are the only service that we could get into this building. The term which we originally signed for three months is now up, and AT&amp;T is requesting a 12-month extension. It would be my recommended, my recommendation to give the supervisor permission to sign the recommended extension.
Second.
I have motioned by clerk Kandell, supported by trustee Clifford, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Item K Digital Video帘 Purchase Request for Ballot Box.
Per state law, we were required to put a ballot box on our property so that anybody could drive by and drop their absentee ballots. Also, per state law, they're requiring an infrared camera on that ballot box so that if it's tampered with or anything happens, we have footage. We contacted ABOL Electronics because they are the ones that recently took care of our security cameras. And I am requesting at this point a, ABOL Electronics up to $4,000 to pay for this infrared camera and installation. Keeping in mind that the state has a grant and will be giving us that money back once it's done and we provide them with an invoice.
I second that, if that's a motion.
Sure.
I have motioned by clerk Kandell, second by trustee Clifford, the deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item L Pure Maintenance Time Bomb Purchase Request, Madam Clerk.
In March of next year, Microsoft is going to require two-factor authentication. two-factor authentication on all of our computers. I have a quote from Hi-Tec for $1,352 within recurring subscription of $152 a month. That's not the hard part to swallow. The hard part to swallow is it's going to take them 50 hours of our current time block to put that in place. If we don't put it in place come March, nobody's going to be able to get on their computers. So at this time, I am requesting that we purchase a time block of 50 hours from Hi-Tec because they are on sale right now at a discounted price. So a 50-hour time block would cost us $7,250.
How much longer do we have left?
We do have 85 hours left on our current one. Um, my concern is if we, um, bring it down too far, we're going to be paying full price. And we don't, I don't think we want to pay full price for their services. So I thought we might want to consider taking advantage of it while it's on sale.
Would we, after this purchase, still have enough left over?
Yes, we'd still have 85.
We need to vote at any, any other company to do an entertainment?
For the time block, for AT, for, um, Hi-Tec is our IT company. There is nobody else to ask unless we switched everything over to a different IT company. I'll make a motion that we approve a 50-hour time block purchase and, from Hi-Tec, at a cost of $7,250. Second.
I have motion by clerk Kandell, second by treasurer Holland, and then clerk please call roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Tannen?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
2024, meeting scheduled proposal?
Should I, I'll have you review a calendar that shows the meeting, uh, board of trustees, planning commission, and recreation department scheduled meetings for 2024. You will notice that, um, the board of trustees has five dates that actually do not follow the normal rotation because there are four elections next year. And the other, the fifth meeting would be the one that would be scheduled January 1st, and none of us are going to be here to be in attendance, so, um... We also had to move recreation commission meetings because of the rescheduling. It's all listed on your sheet in front of you. I will make a motion to approve the 2024 meeting schedule as presented. I second.
I have motion by treasurer Holland, supported by trustee Clifford, and then clerk please call roll.
Tannen?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Item F, building department manager position, Mr. Greba.
Good evening, members of the board. This evening, as many of you know, we recently had our building department manager retire, resign, decide to move on to some much better items in her lifetime at this point. And we wish Amy all the best and will dearly miss her. With that being said, upon review of six applicants to the position of the building department manager, the supervisor's office is currently recommending the hiring of Cindy Heaton to the position of building department manager. With a 90-day probationary period, receiving a rate up to 22 an hour after such probationary period, all other applicants will be considered for the position of building department administrative assistant. With that being said, I'd like to bring that back to the board for consideration.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Cindy Heaton as the building department manager. I don't remember your whole 90 days, the... With a 90-day probationary period. Second.
Madam Clerk, can you move the period to further?
Yes, sure. I don't have anything in front of me to tell you what I should say. Okay. Motion to approve Cindy Heaton as the building department manager on a probationary basis for 90 days, receiving the wage rate of $22 per hour after such probationary period.
This is former treasurer?
Yes.
I have motion by the clerks, supported by the treasurer, and then clerk please call roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Tannen?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item O, clerk presentation acceptance request, Madam Clerk.
After serving Lenox Township for seven years as clerk, I have tendered a letter to the board that is, that it is my intention to retire my position effective January 20, January 1st, 2024. This decision was not easy and took quite some time to make. It is, however, time for retirement. Thank you all for your support along the way. I have garnered some wonderful friendships here and hope to remain in touch after I leave. The staff at Lenox is an amazing group of people and should be praised more often than they are. It is truly the expertise of the staff that keeps the township running. I would, I'd like to offer this board my services as a volunteer senior center director going forward. Further, I would recommend that the board place Ally Lawson as the acting clerk until the next applicable election. Ally is a township resident and has been working as a payroll specialist and administrative assistant in the clerk's office. And I believe that she would be the best person for the position. Again, thank you all for standing with me these past seven years. I'm going to need two motions.
Reluctantly, I'll make the motion to credibly accept resignation of clerk Kandell at a request effective January 1st, 2024.
24.
Sorry, 24.
Also, how ready to be retired?
I have a motion by the chair, second by trustee Clifford, and then clerk please call roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tannen?
Aye.
Motion, Mrs.... Item P, clerk appointment proposal?
I will make the motion to appoint Ally Lawson as the Lenox Township clerk effective January 1st, 2024 until November 20th, 2024 at noon, filling the vacancy left by Luanne Kandell.
I'll second that. I have motion by treasurer Holland, second by the chair, and then clerk please call roll.
Tannen?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion, Mrs.... I have 11 public announcement. I have 12 public board.
I actually have something I just want to say real quick. I should have said that in the public announcements. Um, the community dinner went off very well last month. We raised, um, $1,500 to the food pantry. And that includes food and monetary donations. Uh, we served about 200 people in person and about 100 people carryouts. So it's a nice thing that it's continuing to go, and it was a great turnout.
And I'd like to convey to you the job that...
Thank you. It's a nice surprise. You're not going to miss the man.
I think I can say this for all of the clerkesses and clerkessies.
Thank you.
I have 13 close session.
Make a motion that we go into closed session at 7:08 PM. Second.
I have one for clerk Kandell, second by treasurer Holland, and then clerk please call roll.
Kandell?
Aye.
Tannen?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
And the lights are on.
Time to go on close.